All right, meeting is called to order. If you have a roll call, please determine if we've got a form.
Colonel.
Here.
Karen.
Here.
Tepley.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Beglin. Miller. Jelenic.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Perry, are you getting the audio you need or do you need... Okay, good. Okay. Item one on the agenda is approval of the minutes. But you've had a moment to review those and entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve your minutes.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion of the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes approved. Item two, future housing development at Story Field. I'll start real quick here and turn it over to Jason or Ashley. We did two open houses last week and just invited the neighborhood in. We had good turnout for both of them. And Karen came to both of them, and Ray, I saw you there. And then Melanie Walters came to the second one. And in both cases, you know, people came in, didn't have information, thought they had information. You know, you've seen it before. So there was good discussion, a lot of questions, a lot of skepticism. But in both cases, at the end of the meeting, people that had been dead set against it when they got here not only were for it, they were making suggestions of how to make it look best. So I think it was really valuable exercise to do that. Jason, do you have anything to say about those open houses?
Quite eventful. I thought they went pretty well. Of course, there are always heated, pointed questions. You're always kind of receiving... You're at the, you know, receiving the brunt of a bunch of false accusations, you know. But to Mayor Todd's point, I think we did a good job of providing data, answering questions, giving clear reasons why, expressing how the process that we had been through worked to try to preserve some park space, green space, worked to try to consider what we knew would be concerns in the neighborhood. So all in all, I think the meetings were very positive and look forward to doing them again.
Ashley, did you have anything?
I thought it was absolutely excellent, as I've said about 100 times now. It was...I was surprised by how many people came pleasantly surprised. We had outside of elected people and staff or commissioners. We had about 22 at the second meeting and 10 to 15 at the first meeting. But it was just a really great experience where people got to come in and, as you guys said, receive that information. It was very open, transparent, and just an excellent display of government. So I was very proud to be part of that.
Thank you. I did get one nice email follow-up from a lady who lives in the neighborhood who kind of said what you just said, that she came here not expecting a lot and with a negative outlook and went home with a lot better outlook and was grateful that we had done it. So at this point, we're looking for proposals from builders. That's what this project is.
Exactly. So I...we did have a form that was available to everyone that came. Kind of looked like this, had both of the concepts on the top of the document and allowed them to have a written comment if they chose. It was suggested that they could leave their name if they wanted to or didn't have to, if they didn't want to. There were only seven paper forms filled out, but I would say our attendance probably had to be... Between the two meetings had to be 60, 70 people.
Yeah, you see how many chairs are there. There might have been two empty chairs each time. And it was...I only noticed two people that came to both. There may have been more, but it was two different groups.
Yeah. So out of the seven written documents that we received, five were, you know, complaints. And two, one of them was actually, "When can I buy one?" And the other one was the one that the mayor referred to. So I also had conversations with several people after the meetings. One gentleman came up and I don't remember his name. Actually, a couple of gentlemen came up. And I don't remember either's name. But they just commented about how appreciative they were for the information, thought it was a well-explained process that we had gone through. They had come in with a lot of doubt and then had received a lot of information and felt like we were doing our due diligence to make sure everything was considered. To your point about the development agreement or the request for proposal, I should say, it is available on our website. So if you go to Government and you click on Project Bids and RFPs, it'll bring you into a section here where it lists the current RFPs that are out. Story Field is there. And you can view the details and open a document, which opens it up to the document that Beerbicker helped us to assemble and has the requirements that we had talked about and reviewed in the past. The submittal due date is June 2nd. Beerbicker is working to reach out to different builders. We've got some contacts that I need to make yet. Mayor's been in contact with at least one developer. So we hope to have some type of response, but there's been nothing official yet that we've received in the email. There has been some discussion about whether or not it's worth publishing in the paper. We have not published in the paper. We could. It's on the website. Again, we're using professional networks yet at this point. The RFP isn't specifically to award a bid. It's only to find developers that might be interested in engaging in a conversation based on the conceptual documents that they do. So there's a ton of work to do from here. It's not like, oh, you're the developer go. There's an awful lot of planning, discussion, negotiation, finalizing numbers. I mean, there's a rezoning process we have to go through. So the RFP is primarily to identify, to see if there are interested contractors out there.
Okay, yeah, I did hear from one and he just was asking about timelines and, you know, looking at funding and everything. Would he have to buy all of it or could he buy some of it? And I told him at this point where we are, it's simply a request for a proposal. If you have an idea, come and see Jason or call us. And he was kind of working on financial backing to do it because he would like to do the whole thing if he does it. And if not, then what will he entertain? And that's the only one that's called me.
Is that party fairly local or...
And Jason's got a couple more in mind that he'll be speaking to that are regional, that know our city, that are reputable. Anything further, Jason, on Story Field?
I don't think so at this point.
Okay, anything further from the commission members on Story Field? Okay, item three, comprehensive plan. I don't have an update since the last meeting on this. Ashley, do you?
Well, at the last meeting, we talked a bunch about the room, short-term rentals and room tax. So after that meeting, I responded to the inquiry from the county. They sent that letter about working together. I haven't heard back from them yet. I've talked with our attorney about getting together and kind of, let's come up with a plan and pursuing what we discussed at our last meeting. But then in addition to the short-term rentals, the checklist was provided. Do you need one?
I believe this is the section you're referring to as well, if you can see it even.
Yeah, so we talked about the checklist that came with the comprehensive plan and how it's got on here, you know, who's going to be responsible for doing it and prioritizing them and then giving dates. So that way we can really stay on target with implementing the plan. And as I recall, it was requested that everybody reviews this and if there were anything that they felt were high priority or important or things that they would like to put to the top of the list and then initiate a plan for tackling those, that we could discuss that at this meeting.
I think it will be sent. Does anybody have anything that they would like to make a priority or put themselves... That's what it's assigned to?
Yeah. Isn't this one here? Well, for example, this one is complete. So that would be changed to like... I think Karen perhaps liked the wayfinding signage effort. That would be one that could be... We could bring that towards the top of the list. There was already wheels in motion with which Karen is really involved with.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a section in the Economic Development Strategy, branding and marketing, which we have progressed, you know, through a substantial amount of what was identified. And so one of those was the website, was the new tourism website. Those have all been moving forward. And at this point, I would consider the projects complete and in a phase now where you're continuing a process improvement. But I would consider those website elements complete. We've got increased capacity in the city to develop a brand and market the city. This includes developing relationships with marketing and branding firms, website development, administration, professional photographers, and regional tourism agencies. We're consistently working on those things. The new family of logos, of course, has been completed and we're currently in the implementation phase of those. You're seeing them more and more. You see them at email sign-offs now, website. You've seen them on the parks, some of the tickets for the aquatic center, things like that. Then we do have public facing documents. An entryway signage was the line item in there. So Karen, we met on wayfindings. Do you want to comment on that?
Well, you were on a roll there, but yeah, I can jump in. So myself and Jody Meeden from Parks shows quite an extensive background in signage and she used to work for one of our local sign companies. So the three of us put together an outline and how we're going to proceed with that. And we had a great conversation with our DOT rep. And it was very helpful on how to pretty much go through the process for the permitting of the wayfinding signs. We do have a map with wayfinding signs and I did move that to the next stage already. So I can show you that after, see if it's which one or, you know, what you think will work. So we're really at a good place and we'll just keep progressing with the outline. I'd love to have something in place by some. I mean, the signs are geared for tourists. So it would be great to have things up by them.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Anything further for tonight on the comprehensive plan?
I think we will talk about a little bit. There's some elements that talk about outdoor recreational marketing and then also, you know, are there improvements that we can make to our parks and the utilization of our parks? And so that's also covered in the outdoor recreational plan. So we do have an element that we will be covering on the agenda here that will pertain to that. So we are making progress in that area as well. So our next agenda item is actually that one.
Right.
And also, under Economic Development Strategy, encourage residential, commercial, and industrial development. That one talks about updating ordinances, forms, permit processes, the way in which we direct folks to obtain permits. All things in that area, which are things that Mark is helping us with and Beerbicker is helping us with in general. So we're making progress on that section as well. It just would take a little while.
Okay. Anything further on that item? Okay, item four, as Jason just alluded to, municipal sidewalk and trail improvements. This has to do with the future project on Highway 80 north. I don't know if Ashley or Jason... Ashley, you and I spoke about it briefly, but who wants to introduce this a little bit? Because I don't know how far we've gotten with it. I know it's come up and we've got a couple things to say, but... Do you want me to take the lead?
So I'm pretty...I'm not sure. I know that we've talked about this project, Highway 80 improvement project that the DOT has come up, which takes us basically from the Pine River Bridge out to the city limits and then beyond. It's basically from the Pine River Bridge 10 miles to the north. Of course, a portion of that is inside city limits. So I believe we talked about it here. I know we talked about it a little bit at council, I think, as well. But the DOT had come in and offered some, you know, open houses, public comment times. And we recognize that perhaps we should be discussing a little bit deeper pedestrian traffic in the Allison Park area. And also that with the DOT coming in and doing these things, we might want to address some crosswalk issues that we kind of recognize. And then the DOT also works closely oftentimes with the DNR and a couple grants to do bike trails. The last one project that was worked on, of course, was the one that went from, runs along Highway 80 south and goes from the Pine River Bridge out to the middle school, right? So it's that type of program that is available. So we have had some conversations with both the DOT and the DNR to talk about the possibility of, you know, continuing to improve our bike and pedestrian traffic ways. And so we wanted the planning commission to be aware that we are in conversation with regard to a bike trail addition that would be, I guess, across north and then all the way along the dike out to... This is kind of confusing because I've got to have it on multiple sheets. Along the dike, all the way out to Industrial Park Drive. You can see the orange line on this map. That would represent bike trail. Now, we understand that this had been discussed in the past, that there had been some concerns and possibly some indication that the bike trail would not go on top of the dike. And we are currently looking into that and trying to find if there were actually commitments made, motions made, you know, resolutions made, that type of thing. But as far as it being feasible, the grants that the DOT and the DNR have usually are at very low input for municipalities. We've talked to the county a little bit because there is some portion of the property that would be in the county and not in the city. Josh Elder said he'd be glad to work with us. So the county would write a portion of the grant. Then the city would write a grant as well so that we could couple them together to do a trail. So I think that's an update. We just wanted to introduce it here and find out if there were any comments on the planning commission's behalf.
And we've talked about this a couple of times. You just alluded to it. People say, well, I don't know how we set this up when the dike went in. Could you put a trail there? We haven't found anything yet, I assume? I mean, those discussions saw the dike was done, was at least agreed upon in Darrell Wentz's third term as mayor, a term which I believe ended in April of 1992. So these conversations are decades ago. And again, you know, like these things tend to be, people are coming up with ideas and things they think they remember from back then. We haven't found any evidence that this actually was written into any bylaws or anything pertaining to that dike. If we do, we'll let you know, but so far they're not there. Because that is going to come up. It's been said to me a couple of times. And so we looked. I mean, there's nothing around. Other than that, assuming that's not an issue, I think this is a really good idea. You know, assuming the funding comes through and all that.
Exactly. And the plan would be so long as we don't find anything that says we can't do this. It would be bringing the subject matter before the park board as well as the Public Works Committee. So two separate issues there. So the trail would go to the park board to consider and make a recommendation as they would with any other trail of this nature. And then, as Jason started with the sidewalks, you know, exploring, pedestrian access, things like that, crosswalks, we would take that to the Public Works Committee for a review. At this point, it's more likely than not that we wouldn't pursue adding sidewalks at this point. But it's something that we certainly want the Public Works Committee to be aware of and to be considering on an annual basis. Put it in part of their review plan. Because there is...is it cast iron?
Yes, I think it was galvanized.
A galvanized steel pipe that runs along 80 over in that Allison Park area where a sidewalk could be placed. And the approximate lifespan on that remaining is about 10 years. So at some point, within the next 10 years, we will need to make improvements and replace that. And so that might be the time when a sidewalk installation would be appropriate, something, or maybe not. So anyways, it's just making sure that everybody is fully informed and we keep these things on our radar.
So the pipe that needs to be replaced, where is it?
Do you have an image of the...
It's sewer, right? Is that...
So it'd be stormwater.
Stormwater, okay.
Yeah. So basically where this red line is from Eldon Store Drive out to the north, there is a corrugated drain tube that was put in with some grids in the top to allow it to drain, if I understand correctly. And of course, that galvanized tubing is only going to last for so long. And so the Streets Department Superintendent Terry has said, and the DOT is aware of it as well, and said, yeah, that may last you 10 more years. The challenges right now is that there have been legal challenges to the DOT being able to take property necessary for roads and sidewalks by, I think not for roads but for sidewalks, by eminent domain. So normally they could come in and say, hey, this is really a public safety issue. We're doing the road. And in conjunction with that, in the road right away or next to the road right away, we want to make sure that there's safe space for pedestrians and they could take a piece of property by eminent domain. That has been challenged in court right now. And so when you're on the phone with the DOT, they say, we are not talking about sidewalks right now unless it's clear that the city or the municipality owns the property or it's part of the development agreement or it's already understood that there's going to be an easement and there's going to be sidewalks. So in this particular case, where we have multiple landowners along Highway 80 going to the north, it would require either something like eminent domain, which is not the preferred method. But the preferred method is to go along and negotiate with every single landowner along the corridor. Other issues and elements of our discussion have been, when you do a sidewalk like that, of course, who's going to shovel the snow off the sidewalk? And so you're basically going to be asking the homeowners that are there to now maintain sidewalk that's in front of their home. Other issues include needing to build up the shoulder of the highway in order to support the new drain system that would be there and then have a proper space for the sidewalk, which would then change some of the landscaping elements in the front yards of these houses along the way. So while the DOT expresses that they believe this is a very important project to look at as far as safe ways for pedestrians, and I think we've probably heard from community members that it would be a good idea, there are just a lot of hurdles to go over or under. So it is one of these projects where we, at this time, we'll actually have diagrams, preliminary drawings, coming from the DOT for this and the cost estimate. But it appears like the best path forward is to simply separate it out from the Highway 80 project, say it's not part of that, but to get it into Public Works, like Ashley mentioned, and to begin a public conversation about, is this the right thing to do? And to get people to adjust slowly, also knowing again that the culvert that we have there only has a 10-year life.
And that was a big consideration the DOT had for us was the public involvement. So this will cost money and it will create those challenges Jason described. So they recommended that if we were going to pursue it, we should hold public meetings, kind of like we did with the story open house, and really gauge the temperature of that neighborhood, that area, and see if there's going to be cooperation or not. And so that could shut it down or that could make it happen, in a sense.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this?
Jason, could you show us the slide that shows from the beginning of the dike to Industrial Drive?
So I can probably pull it up on a GIS here. If you can see it down here. All right, so... It's going to be hard to get it. So we're looking at from this area here, can you see that at all? This is the Pine River Bridge. The field's at North Park. And across from the Eldon Store Drive, you have the beginning of the dike, okay? It comes along here and you can see that actually what happened was... Dale Bender was a part of this. I don't know who all was involved in the group. Might have been Melinda, too, applied for a grant. And you can see the gravel on top of the dike. And then they got to this area of Collins Drive. And I understand that one or two homeowners then recalled that the top of the dike, there was conversation, to the mayor's point back in the 90s, about that not being used. They actually ended up reallocating the grant money to another project in the city. So we're actually looking at it one more time and saying, okay, what type of agreements were said, you know? Is the agreement real? Is it recorded anywhere? What could be done in order to, for the people that have concerns, to address those concerns? But then this bike trail path has been discussed in the context of there being a bike trail that would go further north and perhaps allow us to connect on to like the Sparta Elroy of trails. So...
So are we looking at going along Highway 80 from where the dike is up to Industrial Drive?
Correct. Yep. From this point here, we would go up to, exactly, up to Industrial Drive.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is, there is a parcel in there that is in the county?
There's three in the county. Yep, and we've talked to Josh Elder of the Highway Department. He said that he would be more than willing to partner with us to try to get that done on the county side if we think it's a feasible and reasonable project.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, more questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Next item is item five, closed session, panorama of state's development incentive. Five A H here may entertain a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 1985-1E, deliberating or negotiating purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining. or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go to closed session.
May I interject? Uh, perhaps, this may be a poorly constructed agenda. And we may want to skip to seven, and then, since we have the camera there.
He's actually consented to just wait out there and come back.
Okay.
So we already talked about that, but otherwise, whatever. Okay, so entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Sure.
Okay, is there a second? Alright, motion and a second. All in favor of going to closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we're now in closed session. Okay. Alright, status updates and future agenda items. Item seven, modernization, modernization of zoning code.
So, uh, my staff and I went over the zoning ordinance for the city over the last several weeks. We also took a look at the City of Greensburg zoning ordinance, the Village of Maiso Manis ordinance, and the Village of Cross Plains as comparisons and possible, uh, models to use as we push forward. Um, we put together a little bit of a summary that dove into some of the things we, you know, liked about your ordinance, that we would keep, other things that, you know, need to come out of there. And then, uh, we did a little bit, not comparison to the other ordinances, but went through the other ordinances to see, you know, where they have good, where they have bad, things like that. Um, to, uh, to see how we can tie them together, um, and learn from them, or, or come away with it. So, as we reviewed all of these, the couple things to note is, uh, the Village of Cross Plains, which may be, uh, the newer of the three other ordinances, is two hundred and seventy-eight pages, which is longer than we'd really like. Um, the Maiso Mani one, which is from nineteen eighty-eight, is only a hundred and fourteen pages, which is desirable to be a shorter document. And then Greensburg kinda falls in the middle at a hundred and forty-two pages. Uh, but each of them has something, um, that's visually appealing, structurally appealing, uh, that we want to, uh, kinda utilize as we push forward. Um, and then, uh, from your ordinance standpoint, just one of the funny ones in here is that, uh, there's regulations relating to public telephone booths. So I mean, if that's something you want us to keep, we can maintain that. And, and, and our joke was that, you know, where Superman's supposed to change. I mean, if you don't have a phone booth in town, there's, you know, what's, you gotta do, so. But overall, uh, what we're looking at doing is taking it, uh, from its current state and, and put it into where it's more real, you know, more legible for kinda the average person, but it's still obviously got all the teeth of the zoning ordinance. And part of that is, is building in charts into the document. So it's a lot easier to funnel through it, figure, okay, here's the zoning district, here's our intended uses, you know, where does it fall into what category? You know, and how's that fit out? Same thing with setbacks, uh, having the same thing with the chart graphics. So, so it becomes more visually appealing, not just a lot of words on paper, but we have visuals that can demonstrate. So if one of the concepts is zero lot line zoning, uh, for a district or for areas, we're gonna have a picture of what zero lot line zoning is in the document, um, as we push forward, so, so people will have that aspect, and they can kinda understand it. And the setback map that shows you, okay, here's what a structure is, here's the setbacks, you know, if it's a corner lot, it's this, and it's right there in the code, uh, from that aspect. So, um, we're gonna dive into it now, and the goal is to be back with the planning commission. Well, we'd be back with the staff in, uh, later in May, and then planning commission in June is the target, and then hopefully, uh, the council in July, um, is kinda the process we're looking at. But, uh, it's just gonna, we're, we're just gonna work on it, bringing it. So there's a repetitive danger to ordinances, especially with like certain language. And that's where doing a chart for districts and doing just one section of unconditional use language shortens the document just from that standpoint. Um, but then, there's other things that, as a policy board, you'll have to be a part of, is, and, and that's, uh, the key aspect of it. So, um, as we're going through and doing this, uh, uh, new ordinance, I ask that you take a chance and take a look at it, if, the current one, and see if there's certain things you like, certain things you don't like about it, to let us know, uh, so that we attempt to keep that stuff, um, in there or make sure we remove it. But, uh, we're not, structurally, we're not changing it truly beyond anything besides what we've already talked about, about allowing more housing opportunities throughout the ordinance, um, and not being, like, so restrictive on like an R1 zoning, but being allowing for accessory dwelling units. Um, so we have that on, more opportunities for people to, to create those. And I know that's a big aspect of it, but...
So if you go onto the website, you can pull up the zoning code, sort through the ordinances there, or if you know just off of the top of your head that we have something like phone booth regulations, or we don't have a certain kind of regulation that's critical, like Mark said, please, please, please let us know, so that way we can make sure it's incorporated within that, and then in June, you don't get a code slapped in front of you that's likely going to be more than a hundred pages. And then you're saying, why is it like this, why didn't we think about that? The more we can do on the front end, the better. Um, and that's, Jason and I are reviewing our ordinance. Um, you know, we've identified things prior to marketing here that were of concern or that should be changed. Um, and then we're gonna continue to do that, as well as look back the last decade or so, and see what changes were made in the last decade. So what was important, that the code needed to be amended, and is that something we need to make sure needs to be maintained? Have that same, same language or similar language? So we're just asking for help. If, if you could do that for us, that would be, um, very, very, very helpful.
Okay. So do you, would you want, you know, to meet with us one-on-one? Or do you want us to email?
I suppose it depends on the complexity of it, but if you, um, you email, that would be fine, if it's simple enough to email. Um, and probably write to zoning@richlandcenterwi.gov. They could be submitted to, that way Mark's able to get them. Um, and we're not having, you could send it to all three of us, but make sure that Mark's in there, so that way we all are seeing the same thing. Um, and if there are things you're just not certain on, I would encourage you, if possible, on Wednesdays to come in here when Mark's here, and it could be a conversation with him or a group of us. Um, and we could go over it that way, too.
Okay, I mean, just from, you know, working with what we have had previously, I think a lot of our ordinances were, um, entered in by date. So let's say you wanted to put up a fence, well, if you... It, it was done by date versus, um, by subject. So where you were saying, you know, a little bit user-friendly for the average person out there wanting to use them. Um, so, we, is it kind of the plan to do something more by subject matter versus chronologically by date? You know, something that was done in sixty-eight was a fencing ordinance, and now it's been changed in seventy-two? Well, how would you know that if you're just the average Joe? You know, to look forward or to look back, or?
Part of that issue will be solved once we complete the recodification.
Okay.
So that way, you're gonna have your current code organized and, you know, in a nice and tidy way. That's gonna be based on, um, the work that Mark's doing, and you'll be able to see the current one, and then there's an index, so you can see what changes were made, but you're not gonna be shown the entire code for the entire history of Richland Center like we have now.
Okay. That sounds good.
Much better, right?
Yes.
Okay. Anything further on item seven?
Um, and just one more thing. So, um, we will see this at some point, like seventh of July. We won't see it as it's being worked on the website, so we go, oh, I thought maybe this would be there. That won't, that won't happen, right?
Well, I'm not saying it won't. Um, I would think that, uh, after we put together kind of a preliminary draft here and, and staff reviews it, at that point, then I think that's a good time to, to send it out to you, to just peruse it and review it, and see where we wanna go with that.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay, anything further? Okay, item eight, municipal lots for sale?
Yeah, so the update on four sixty west first and two ninety-one, which Jefferson, I think west, isn't that? No.
South.
South, south, is it north?
It is not.
Anyway, two ninety-one Jeffersons, north, you're right, it's north Jefferson. So we had an ad in the paper, um, that said, basically, all reasonable offers will be considered. Um, you know, we put kind of a timeline in there. I have had a conversation with one individual about that. Um, it's on the website, um, lots for sale. Um, we just don't, we, we haven't had any, um, calls on an ad that was placed in the paper. So, um, I think probably that the next step is, um, I'll get back in just a second. So before we decided to put it out on our own, run it in the paper and see what happened, we had kind of reached out and tried to find a Realtor that might be willing to, um, list the lots. And of course, when you're talking about lots of very low value, it can be a lot of work for a Realtor to work with the municipality and go through the meetings and all that stuff. So, we actually didn't have a proposal from a Realtor. Um, I think, uh, Ash and I, we haven't had a chance to talk about this, but I would suggest that, we don't hear anything here, um, shortly, that I may develop a, a program, one that could be used on the lots, that would be an additional incentive for, other than just saying lots for sale. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we have worked on a development agreement that would accompany the lots, so that's, it's kind of a, I don't know what's the term, encumbrance a little bit, because they could offer something on the lot, feel like the lot price is very reasonable, but we're going to say, most likely, in, in the negotiation process, that you're gonna have to put a ten thousand dollar performance guarantee down. Fully refundable, when you meet those deadlines. If you miss the deadlines, we're gonna keep a part of it. So that's kind of an encumbrance, right? It's forcing them into a timeline, we think about a year and a half to two years. Um, so there's a number of things, but I think next step is make a few more phone calls, uh, and then probably try to reach out to a Realtor and just come to an agreement with one to get them listed. Um, and then it's likely that a Realtor's probably gonna maybe want a flat fee or something like that. But, um, at this point, since no one submitted, uh, an official proposal, um, we believe that we have the, uh, the flexibility to be able to approach a Realtor in town and just say, hey, we, we're thinking about this program. Um, you know, and have a conversation, and then get them listed on NLS.
Um, the individual you said you heard from, an individual? It's the one you told me about?
Yeah.
Okay, anything?
Um, I actually talked to him, was it today? I talked to him yesterday, and he said things had changed a bit, and that he wasn't in such a rush to do something, so...
Okay, so I heard from someone else?
Okay, good.
About that I'm talking about, just a local individual?
Yeah.
And then you're aware of the individual who's got a house he wants to move? You're aware of who that is?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, so there are, but two Realtors, though. Um, there is one that I've had a brief conversation with, but if you didn't hear from them, but I'd be more than willing to help with that and go back there.
Yep.
Because we got probably, probably what this is gonna, I, I think that's what this is gonna take. Maybe not, but...
Yeah, I, I mean, we've thrown around a lot of ideas, you and I, Karen. I think I've talked, had ideas, um, Ash and I have thrown around a lot of ideas. But, um, there have historically been, you know, some incentive programs even that could have been used, um, in, from Richland Center. Um, and, and maybe we need to do something like that. Um, I did talk to a banker, um, actually Ash and I were both in the meeting, and we suggested the possibility of a local, um, banking institution offering zero percent construction loan for six months. So, we're trying to come up with creative ways and different incentives that would make it interesting. We are in that perfect storm, where again, we were hit by massive inflation, and, and even though there's talk about things slowing down, your builders are still saying, uh, we're a year out. So builders traditionally would say, eh, I got three months worth of work. Eh, maybe when it, this winter, when it's slow, I might try a spec house. We're, we're of course not seeing that around here. So, it's just a very tight market all the way around.
Anything on this one? Right? Lisa, anything else on this one?
Do, uh, do, do we have for sale signs on any of those lots?
I haven't, no, I haven't put, I have not run a lot of sales signs in the permit.
An old observer has a very high circulation rate, about two hundred thousand papers a week or something. And I just found the, found the for sale, I didn't know they were on the website, you know, navigating, but I mean, Mark, we just try another simple way of having some nice signs made to go on those lots. And the orange tree one should have like a, like a four-by-eight sign that's promoting that.
Yep, that's, of course, that's our redevelopment authority, and we haven't had a meeting with the redevelopment authority in some time. But I understand your point, I agree.
Do, I mean, you didn't have to have a meeting with them to put that in the paper or put on the website, did you?
The re, the land there?
Yeah, for sale.
Um...
On Highway fourteen?
No.
So you're more...
But when we're talking about a four-by-eight, somebody's gonna have to spend money, so have to come...
Well, okay, we could do a simple meeting of the RDA to approve a sign on the lot. I mean, if...
And we do have another item there, I think we talked, I talked to Trin McDow today that we're working on, that would involve the RDA, too. So, we would have a couple agenda items that we could move through.
Okay, anything further on municipal lots? Okay, item nine, industrial park site work. I brought it up in the other, the other topic, but, um, Jason, on that, uh, I guess just start from the beginning on what we get heard back on that one.
Uh, so... Let's see. Ashley, was the intent to primarily cover the, the fill? This one, okay. So there, there's several things that are going out in, in the industrial park. You can kind of see from this map here that there are lots of lines between lots. Lots are narrow, um, so it says three, four, five, cotton fill. So all of those lines there were easements that were built in as outlots. So, we've spent time with, um, New Brick Engineering to, to look at this and say, um, some of those, uh, easements are not good places. There's drainage ditches that are, that weren't appropriately surveyed and accounted for. There's a, a retaining pond out there that wasn't appropriately accounted for. If you sold the lot, you'd sell the drainage pond. And so, um, they have gone through and offered a, a certified survey map, a preliminary one at this point, where we would be combining lots. So, um, any lots that, these small and narrow lots would be combined into one large one, and then we would subdivide off what people would, may want. We would also be getting rid of all these outlots. So basically, where you see these dash lines, um, right now they're outlots. So in other words, it's lot three, outlot three, lot four, outlot four. And so, we would be taking those all out, and the way that they do it now is just through easement. We just simply create an easement, there's no reason to, for the city to maintain outlot, you know? So, we've really cleaned up a lot of things. Part of that process as, as well was looking at, um, the topography of these lots here. So again, um, in the... Let's see if this will work. Okay, can you see the rip laser? So this here is the pump house, so this would be the county shop. Pump house, RAC, uh, electric is there. So the pump house is here, this is the lot that we've been talking about, um, being one of the ones that there's been interest expressed for. All the blue, red, yellow, green, all of that is, are ways of denoting how much fill is in those areas and how much would have to come out. And so, again, there's been a calculation done on this and on that lot, let's see here. Where did the calculation go? Anyway, I apologize, I thought I had it pulled up. But the calculation is roughly 150, 160 truckloads of fill have to come off there. To be able to allow for something that could look like this, which is just a basic footprint of a building with parking spaces, and so, there's 150 or so truckloads that have to come out of there. We talked about this with Josh Elder because the county needs sand. We've talked to Terry in our Streets Department, he's done some, dug some pilot holes. We know that it's sandy, he believes it can be used in construction. Our, especially the Water Department, uses a lot of sand fill when they have to replace a water main, they put sand around it. And so, we can stockpile a bunch of it. So, between the city, possibly the county, we are working at a way to do what I call bootstrapping and to get the soil off of there for as inexpensively as possible so that it would be a build-ready lot. Of course, then we also need to take that same step with the lots that are further... So, this is County Trump A. You have the RSF building, the financial building that's here was the old daycare. These are the three lots between that and I think this is A, Wood, is that right? Or is that the, no, it's not, it's the ambulance.
Oh, yes.
This is the ambulance garage here. So, these three lots, the same way, this is another 150 to 200 loads of fill that have to come out. Okay? We didn't just say, we're gonna scrape it all the way down to curb level. If we did that, we did a computation on one foot of fill over this space to take it down one foot would, I think it was add another 150, 100 to 150 truckloads. Huh?
Here's the other lot.
The other one? So, on the other lot, we said real quick, we did a computation, if we just took it down a foot lower over the entire lot, how much would it take? It'd take another 100 truckloads to fill up. So, we're not taking these lots down to curb level. You can see there's kind of some lines along there. Well, those are your topographic lines or your, what's the right?
Elevation.
Elevation lines and they're at one foot. So, you can see we're roughly at curb, we're coming up right away, up on three feet. That's so we can soil balance and so we don't have to haul another 100 truckloads out of there. So, that's what would happen in there and we've also done the analysis with the lot that's on the corner. This is A, an industrial drive here. This lot here, they did the soil balancing model and believe that we can just take the high spot and regrade it, move it down to the low spot and create an elevated lot so it actually can be completely soil-balanced. So, you strip the topsoil, take your subsoil, move it down the hill, compact it all back, cover it back with the topsoil. So, we don't feel like this is something that we would need to do right now. We may not actually do it ourselves until somebody says, you know, we want to develop and then we could have a conversation about it. But it's not as big of an obstacle because you don't have 100 to 200 truckloads to remove from the site. Alright? Our goal is to work on the lot to the north first and I'm working to set up a meeting again with Streets, with our Water Department, with the county and just say, hey, do we think we can get it off there and how quick? And then, if that is not an option, we may reach out to the different excavators in town, call them into a meeting and say, hey, do people need fill? Hospitals, possibility there's other construction probably around where the fill could be used. So, I think that's a quick summary on where we are. We did meet with Matt from Bierbicker on Monday, was it? And Matt is proceeding to put in the erosion control plan and pull a DNR permit for disturbing, land disturbance, soil removal. So, we'll have those, those permits are good for three years and can be extended.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay, if there are none, that puts us at Item 10, which is future agenda items. And I think some of these, as we've said before, comprehensive plans are gonna be on there for a while. So, we're working on that. Anything that was not here? I'm sure next month we'll have updates on the things that we discussed in closed session.
I'm sure we will.
So, those will be on there. Do you have anything beyond that right now? Does anybody else? No?
How's it? How's it?
If you want that as a general topic, yes, that's kind of where I'm saying we're gonna go. That's alright, alright, Mr. Cairns. Okay, then that next meeting date, fourth Wednesday of the month, which is May 24th, 5:30 PM. That puts us at adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Can you adjourn?
Is there a second? Alright. All in favor of adjournment in this meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, this meeting is adjourned.